Tim Orozco and Councilmember Dante Early are not in today. We will begin the April 5th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening, and I'd like to ask Mr. City Attorney to please provide a report.
Yes ma'am, the council met in closed session under initiation of litigation. No reportable action was made.
All right, thank you. And we would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Ms. Jenaba Lahai. If you could please come to the mic and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lahai. As is noted on our agenda, City Council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address City Council issues on issues not listed on the agenda. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out a request to speak card and return it to the clerk. Tonight, we have Ms. Ledesma here with us. And once the staff report has been read and we open the item up for public comment, at that point, we will not accept any further speaking requests, even if you stand up and say you forgot. We do this to help maintain a transparent process for those requesting to speak and submit a request to speak card prior to that point in the process where our clerk will announce the name of the individual requesting to speak. For example, if you are addressing a specific agenda item, please turn in your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular agenda item. Now, in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes. Normally, it's about three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. And furthermore, we ask that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. We ask that those in attendance and those who address the City Council abide by the code of conduct and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. And that brings us to Item 1, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda Within the Jurisdiction of the Council. Madam Clerk, depending on the number of speakers, I'll determine the time between two to three minutes. How many speakers are there?
Six.
Six, sounds good. We'll have three minutes per person to speak. If you can announce who are the requests to speak at this time.
Jennifer Finton and Deb Banks.
I think you need to press the gray little button at the base of the mic. Is it? That's okay. Okay. We've got your attention now. We can hear you now.
Okay, I'll start over. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Finton with Breathe California Sacramento Region. I'm the acting CEO. We've been active in the region for over 105 years trying to improve lung health through improving air quality and working to reduce tobacco influence. We're here today, I'm here with Deb Banks, introduce yourself in a minute, but we're here today to talk about the Breathe Bike Rodeo and the Mayas Bike Month kickoff event. We are super excited to have this back in West Sacramento for our second year, and it's going to be on the River Walk from 11:00 to 2:00 on April 30th. I sent a save the date a while ago, but the flyer is finished, and we'd love any help getting the word out. Now, it's free for the community. And Deb can talk about how that ties into Mayas Bike Month.
Yep, we're really excited. I'm Deb Banks. I'm the Executive Director of SABA, the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates, and this is our second year of hosting Mayas Bike Month for the whole six county region that's part of SACOG. So, we're really excited because last year, we were very Sacramento-centric in where all of our events are, and we've moved it to this year, it's going to be West Sac. So, the kickoff event, as you know, is at the Breathe Bike Rodeo that's going to be at the River Walk. And then, a couple weeks later, we've got an event that's going to go on in West Sacramento over in the industrial area over where Bike Dog is, and we've got a bunch of bike rides that are coming, and then there's an event there. So, we're really excited to be able to help showcase Sacramento and West Sac specifically, and we want you guys to join us. There's socks, there's swag, there's teams, there's prizes, and you know, I'll be out at the Sycamore Trail tomorrow, and we're really excited to support all of the infrastructure that's going on, and we really want you all to support Mayas Bike Month because it's a huge thing for clean air, for healthy citizens, for cycling, all the good stuff that's going on, and it's so much fun. We are looking for sponsors. We'd love for you guys to join us and to join West Sacramento in sponsoring Mayas Bike Month, but basically, we're just here to let you know, we're bringing the fun to West Sac, all things bicycles for the month of May.
Yep, we have a lot of community groups that are going to have tables at the Breathe Bike Rodeo, Yolo County Children's Alliance, Yolo County Library, Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District, among others. So, it's going to be a fun event, and we look forward to seeing you there.
Yeah, and I have socks for all you guys.
Thank you.
Robin Davis.
Hello. I'm Robin, and I live in my 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I'd like to give a shout-out to Camp Resolution in the City of Sacramento, who is a great example of residents coming up with their own solutions, not out of defiance, but out of survival. So, congratulations to our unhoused neighbors for securing public land to self-govern themselves until the city has available permanent housing for each and every resident. They inspire me and give me hope while I wait for engineers, architects, politicians, and entire community development department and spend several thousand dollars over two and a half years just to figure out how I'm going to live in my home, a home I've been living in safely for six years. At the same time, watch our governor vow to spend another billion dollars and send out hundreds of temporary shelters to fight homelessness, endless financial investment with little to no innovation or self-reflection on what's actually working. This is all reactionary policy that continues to get more creative, but our innovation for long-term options has been stagnant. So, I want to make clear to the community, I will be displaced from my perfectly good home on my own land and made homeless by these same policymakers vowing to spend more on homeless prevention. This could easily be prevented by widening our very narrow view of what housing can be. This state continues to buy temporary tough sheds, pallet homes, and motels while simultaneously building the same kind of permanent housing that very few can actually attain. The permanent housing we are building is expensive, takes years to finish, and needs to be forever taxpayer subsidized. We have created zoning and code standards that only the government or a small wealthy minority can meet. Complacent old policies are what contribute to these growing disparities. I'm not saying to stop building your luxury or your government-subsidized housing, but you cannot simultaneously prevent the innovation of the people that are coming up with their own long-term solutions. Please, open your minds to alternative housing options and give the freedom to build more diverse housing back to the people through innovation and choice. The Greek philosopher Socrates once said, "The secret to change is to focus all your energy not on fighting the old, but building on the new." We know my home cannot fit into this narrow, old, broken housing system, and we do not need to waste time dwelling on all the ways it does not meet these current standards, but we can be efficient by shifting the focus on building a new path, and that's what I'd like the opportunity to do. I know you all inherited this system, but you have the power to allow more progressive innovation and to build on the new. Thank you.
Guy Stevenson.
City Council members, I have an issue with this bike lane, these people parking in the bike lane here in West Sac, and I already talked to the chief about it. In West Sac, it's a $42 ticket, but by the California Vehicle Code, it's two points on your driving record, and it's $238 fine. On the other side of Harbor, you have all these trucks, they're very arrogant, you know, they park down there, they detach their trailers and put these big old tractors on top of these trucks. So, guess what the bikes have to do? They go around. So, what does that do? That creates a problem, a safety concern. There's already been, what, three people just since they paved that that got hit. One was down by the storage unit. He is still in the hospital, and it's a big issue for me. It's a pet peeve that I have because you have a lot of people during the summer and during the winter that go from Davis to Sacramento and vice versa. That whole stretch should be clear of all vehicles because when you have a solid white line, you cannot park there, you cannot stand there in a vehicle, and you can't idle your car. You've got to be out of the path of a bike. And it's a safety concern because there's kids that are riding bikes, and there's adults. There was over 300 over the weekend, this last weekend, and they had to go around, the only, they had to go around, but the only trucking company over there that does their job is Estes. The rest of those guys down there, they're arrogant. I've told them, don't park your truck out here, and do not take these big old tractors onto the pavement. You're tearing it up, you're detaching the trailer, which is another fine. That's $495 if you detach a trailer and leave it there, and it's just not aggressive enough. And these parking enforcements, no offense to you, chief, the parking enforcement guys are more about educating, and they're not so much about writing tickets. But the only way that you're going to make these people learn is give them a fine. And the fine is, there's two things. There's a fine, and there's one point, well, it's actually one point on your DMV record if you park in this bike lane. I have a pet peeve about it, it's about safety with me, and I have lots of friends that ride from Davis to Sacramento, and I don't want any of them, want anybody to get hit because that's a busy highway over on the other side of Harbor between Harbor and Lake on West Capitol, very dangerous, and it needs to be, it really seriously needs to be directed towards the chief, but you know, he can only do so much, and he's doing a great job. So, thank you for your time.
E.C. Alice Edwards.
Very weird for me to address you in this matter. City Council women, I've known, Verna, I can't even say for how long, I can't remember the day, I have voted for every single one of you women that are sitting on this council. I take my voting power very serious. I take my voice very serious. I take my life and my job very serious. I've also had a personal relationship with Erin. Our children played T-ball together. We've had personal conversations about my job, and I kind of feel like my voice got lost somewhere at some point, and there, our Port Commission unfortunately has been doing closed sessions, so we have no clue what's going on with our job. I'm shaking right now. I'm really, really scared. I need to know that I have people that I can trust, that are going to keep their word and do the things that they say that they're going to do. I need somebody like Tim Campbell on the Port Commission. I support him 110%. I know my fellow brothers and sisters at the Port of Sacramento support him. He is very knowledgeable. There is absolutely nothing that you could probably ask him from, about the port that he wouldn't know the answer to. I think having somebody that has knowledge on the port is somebody that we need to have in the Port Commission. I don't want to talk ill, but the other person that's running, I feel that they're only out for money. They don't worry about our community and things like that. They want to put more money in their pockets and more money in other people's pockets. Tim, I know he's going to fight for what's best for our city. He's going to fight for what's best for our port. During the pandemic, we worked. We worked our tushes off. I can't even tell you, like, you know, we're all six feet apart and working, masks on, you know, that we made, did so much work during that time period that it's shocking to me to hear the things that I'm hearing right now, and I just need to feel like I have somebody I can trust and I can support to make good decisions for the City of West Sacramento, for the Port of Sacramento, and for myself. I, I'm really scared right now. I just bought a new home. I'm trying to give my children the life that they deserve, that my husband and I have worked so hard for. Nothing I've ever wanted more than to wear this right here. This, this means a lot to me, and I'm scared. Please, please vote for Tim Campbell, for Port Commissioner. He, he will do all of us, all of us, right. Thank you.
Alfred Melbourne.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council members. It's a pleasure to be able to be here tonight. Thank you for your guys' service and what you all are doing. Again, I would like to always, well, at this point, bring up the fact that the land acknowledgement and the words for the First Nations people. I'm going to just recall that First Nations people need more than words, we need actions to support the people in all the atrocities, the genocide that took place. And so, with Estes, I mean, we get representation on the commissions and different committees that West Sacramento has. So, but I just wanted to thank also the investment or the ideas and the work that's going in towards Sacramento Avenue and the investment in the North Area. I was really impressed by the presentation that they put forward not too long ago, and I'm happy to see that we have some interesting ideas and folks that are working hard to revitalize the North Area investment and rebuild the infrastructure in the North Area. I think it's long overdue. Also, wanted to, excuse me, I wanted to bring to your all's attention and everyone who's listening, Three Sisters Gardens happen to be director and founder of Three Sisters Gardens. We're a native indigenous nonprofit working with the potential high-promised youth this week, and we have a skill share going on where youth are going to be performing a mini farm tour. We're going to have some seeding, composting. I'll say a surprise guest, youth speaker, so if anybody wants to come out, there will also be some farm-to-forth snacks provided by Three Sisters Gardens. So, that's April 8th at the Fifth and C Street site from 10:00 to 12:00. So, if you guys want to come out and show some support for that. Also, we're getting pretty close to our All Nations Indigenous Fest. So, I know, Madam Mayor, you had the pleasure to attend last year, and of course, the invite is open again, but we have May 13th. I'm not sure where our next City Council meeting comes in, but in case we don't get an opportunity then, we have All Nations Indigenous Fest at 485 Regatta Lane. That's at our River City Farm site in the back, and we're going to have culture, music, poetry, food, and some vendors out there. So, any of you guys want to come out and support, there's also lots of different opportunities for sponsorship and for donating and getting involved. So, threesistersgardens.com. Truly appreciate the folks' support here, and we're going to continue to grow food and support our community. So, we thank all our City Council members, stakeholders, and folks that are supporting and sharing our story, and always happy to be here in front of the City Council and speak, and thank you guys so much.
Maria Gurhava.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here to report out to the residents of West Sacramento, the latest happening in West Sacramento. I want you, I want the residents and everybody to have the inside scoop of what's going As many of you know, we have a trouble with Robin getting her tiny house approved, and I think what's important here is that the policies are formed or are being interpreted to help real estate developers versus tiny homeowners. So, that's part of the problem. We don't have our policies geared towards small homes. We have them geared towards real estate developers and their interests, and so this is very, very concerning, and that's why Robin might be homeless, even though she owns property. And so, that's very sad to see. And I think what's most important is that the community and all the voters, most importantly, especially the vote of that vote for Senate, need to know that there's one person behind this, all of this, and that is our former mayor. He's still running things, and people need to be very much aware of that. Likewise, in the port, I think everybody knows that he is on the Port Commission, and I think someone was worried about their job. We have someone worried about where they're going to sleep. We have someone else worried about their income because someone's real estate interests are more important. And so, that's very important that the public and voters, more than anyone else, know. And so, I think there's something in the Constitution that says that there should be no laws written that are bad for the community, and I really don't know which law that is. But anyway, the other thing I needed to do, and to do, it's not a shout-out, but it's actually a shame-out, to ply jam Pacific Windows. I have, as many of you know, I'm a nonprofit organization. I had five employees come to me, and we went and we did a police report because they were having exploitive working conditions that involved violence. And so, they weren't serious enough that we could bring labor, serious labor violations, but they are serious, and so I wanted ply jam Pacific Windows to feel somewhat ashamed because there's five, at least minimum of five employees that have filed police reports for very, very bad labor practices. So, anyway, thank you very much. Oh, and, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
There are no more speakers. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And can I get some clarification from the city manager on the port commissioners, who they are?
Yeah, sure. The current port commissioners are Mayor Guerrero, Councilmember Sapisio-Hole, Councilmember Yolo County has an appointment, that's Supervisor Oscar Vegas, and there's currently a vacancy on the Port Commission.
Okay, thank you so much. I just heard that Christopher Cabaldin was a port commissioner, but...
He was, and that term concluded, I believe, at the end of 2022, so he's no longer a port commissioner.
Thank you so much. And just also wanted to, I've heard about somebody becoming homeless here because of the tiny home issue. If you can continue to work with that individual to address the concerns raised, I thank you so much for that. I know that you've been working hard on that, so thank you so much for that.
Madam Mayor, we do have another public speaker.
For public comment?
Public comment for number one.
Mr. City Attorney, at this time, I have not closed public comment. Is it okay to add one more?
If you have a speaker card for it, yes.
Have a speaker card for it? Yes, okay, please go ahead.
Rhonda Morningstar Pope.
Just to be clear, I didn't forget that time. She missed me. I know that comment was meant toward me. I'll try to be better at that. My tribe purchased the Bright VFW, and we did this for our community. We did this because we don't have anything on the North Side. We have nothing on the North Side. And so, in December, we filed for our permits. You guys, this is the second stop-work order, and I'm starting to feel like it's a stop-progress order. I'm starting to feel targeted. I don't know what's going on. We've had two different inspectors come out. One tells my contractor one thing, the other tells my natural resource slash wears every hat tribal employee another. We got a stop-work order today because we were grouting and painting. That's pathetic. We have our grand opening set for April 15th, and I'm going to have that grand opening regardless of what politics or whatever the heck is going on within your building department. Even if I have to do it outside on my grass, I'm going to have that grand opening. So, I don't know, I know there's some City Council members that don't like me, and I hope and pray that that's not what's happening here, but I'm starting to feel targeted. I'm not going to allow the city to stop our celebration. I will celebrate this no matter what. My second issue that I want to raise, back when, and I'll sound like a broken record, I don't care, Tower Bridge Gateway. I specifically said, I hope he's not running. You guys want to name this street after our former mayor, and I hope he's not running for office, and he's running for office. And I think it's very interesting that you chose, the street that you chose, to honor the former mayor, even though you had over 500 people oppose it and numerous people come giving public comment, and you were dead-set to name Tower Bridge Gateway after the former mayor. And now, he's running for Senate. How convenient and shame on the City of West Sacramento because you know what this looks like? Looks like we're a bunch of big fat cheaters. It looks like we're over here trying to promote the prior mayor, and I know some of you are very good friends with him, and I know that you knew that he had this planned all alone, all along. I know that he continuously files his committee. It's on the City of West Sacramento.
Can I just ask that you direct your comments towards...
Well, I just look all over, sorry I can't help it. So, anyways, that's shameful. It's inappropriate. You should reconsider that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, just making sure nobody else was missed. We will close the public comment now, and under, next is under Item 2 is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we will have our chief, Rob Strange, and the Child Abuse Prevention Council member with the Yolo County Children's Alliance, Jenaba Lahai, join Chief Strange to provide a presentation in lieu of reading our extensive proclamation because I would like for you to present the history of child abuse prevention and the relevance for West Sacramento. So, thank you so much, both.
Thank you. Wait to get this slide fired up there, but while we're doing that, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity, one, to be in front of you as your police chief, but in this role more as a member of the Child Abuse Prevention Council for our county. I will say this work is important to me as I think this issue is important to everyone across our community. I know tonight in council chambers, there's kids, lots of kids here, which is awesome to see, supporting their parents and other issues, but I will say this, 25 years in the profession that I'm in, and the reality is, is I have seen far, far too much tragedy for anybody, and that is unfortunately the reality of the... And that is unfortunately the reality of this work and the reality of child abuse. And so this means a great deal to me. And I also think it means a great deal to not only you as leaders in this city, but to everyone in this room and everyone across our community. What's also really important is to understand what we're trying to do as members of the county's Child Abuse Prevention Council and what Jenaba will talk about shortly, what we're trying to do across a whole plethora of service providers that are making it their mission every day to change the frequency of child abuse through healthy supports for our families and for the children here. So just quickly, the Child Abuse Prevention Council's mission is to eliminate child abuse and neglect and the adversity that it causes. We advocate for children and families in our county by providing a forum for inter-agency collaboration, coordination, and cooperation in the prevention, detection, intervention, treatment, and legal processing of child abuse cases. The real strength of what we do on the council is that we can collaborate across our different sectors and our different support areas of emphasis. We recommend improvements to services for families and children, and we encourage and facilitate community support for child abuse and neglect programs. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jenaba.
Thank you, Chief Strange. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for having us here today in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is a national awareness during this time of the year. So our organization, Yolo County Children's Alliance, was created over 20 years ago as the Child Abuse Prevention Council. That's how we started. However, when it comes to child abuse prevention, it's not just about policies or bringing a collaborative together and doing prevention work. There's also programming that has to go with that. And we've been lucky enough to have wonderful representatives on our council over the last 20 years, which includes our own police chief, Chief Strange. And we really thank you for all the support that you've allocated to the council, not only with community engagement, but also in really governizing all of the law enforcement chiefs in the county around this issue. So whenever we have information, we send it to Chief Strange so he can send it to his counterparts in other cities, which has been very helpful for us. So this month, we decided to partner with the San Joaquin County Child Abuse Prevention Council and Resilient Yolo to bring the LISA project to our county. So the LISA project is a multi-sensory exhibit that offers a child's perspective on the generational and cyclical nature of child abuse. By hearing real stories as you walk through each room, visitors are fully immersed in the experience. The exhibit highlights the indiscriminate and secretive nature of abuse and its lasting impact. So part of the council's work is education as well as prevention and incorporating trauma-informed care into the systems of care in Yolo County. And this project is going to highlight exactly what child abuse is and what children face. So for the city of West Sacramento, we're hosting an opening reception which you've all been invited to. I hope you can all make it. And the next day will be an opening exhibit for the public, which will be at the community center. So we encourage everyone to come and support this project. We'll be leaving West Sacramento for the city of Davis on the 20th, and then we'll be ending in the city of Woodland. Again, come hear about what abuse is. Meet all of the organizations in the county that are working with children and family. Get some resources if you need some resources. And if you would like to volunteer and get involved in this project, that would be also a great place to do so. So thank you.
And just to wrap it up, just for you all, but also for the community beyond the LISA project, I think it's really important to note that, as Jenaba said, the Child Abuse Prevention Council has been in place for a very long time with the leadership of Yolo County Children's Alliance. In that time, a vast amount of resources have been assembled, and those are all located at Strong Families, sorry, strongfamiliesyolo.org. So resources for families, resources for children, but also really importantly, resources that help you understand, no matter where you're situated in our communities, there is something you can do. There are actions you can take. And so we look forward to seeing as much of the community that can come out, go through this experience with the support that we offer, but also find their place in supporting those that are engaged every day in the supportive work of folks engaged, or sorry, encountering child abuse and adverse childhood experiences. Thank you very much.
One last thing, the exhibit is also in Spanish. So if you're a Spanish-language speaker, it will also be recorded in Spanish.
Very good. So thank you so much for all you do to protect our children and help families struggling, experiencing, you know, some of the challenges that come, you know, together with child abuse. And I want to be able to go down with all the council members so that we can get a photo. I think, like, see. Say something before we take the photo? Would you like to do that afterwards? You can say something now if you'd like.
I just, I wanted to take a moment. You mentioned trauma and tragedy for the families. And I want to thank our first responders, Yolo County Children's Alliance employees, and all of the people who make this their life's work because I know they take it home with them. And so thank you for the work and for putting a piece of your heart and soul into preventing this and making space in their life to protect our children. So I know it's not easy, but I see you, and I thank you very much for that.
Just to ask one question. Have you made this presentation for our school board, the West Sacramento School Board?
A presentation like this one, we have not. But we have been in contact with the school board. They are also invited to that same event on the evening of the 18th.
Okay, thank you. Next is our consent agenda, items three through eight. Are there any requests to remove an item? Yes, Madam Mayor, five. Five, right. And that's it. Take item five for now, and I think we have... Any questions?
Yes, I do have several questions. I'm hoping the...
Is it Elijah?
Elijah.
I think it'll depend on the nature of the question. So if you could have Elijah and Daniel, that's from the planning division.
That's great. Thank you so much. So actually, one of my first questions is, this was on the consent agenda, but it's actually an information item, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So I would like to see...
Elaborate a little bit on that.
If you could, please.
Yeah, so this is a required report that, you know, every city in California, I believe, is required to file regarding progress on our general plan and housing element. So you're right, it is an informational item in terms of just stating that information on the progress on our plans. There are several projects listed in here. They're more or less updates on those projects. The council isn't approving anything tonight or taking any action on the item other than to, I believe, just to review and accept the progress report.
Okay. I do have another question. The projects that are listed under long-range projects, are these the... Are these the only long-range projects that we have, or are there more?
These are the significant long-range planning projects, but there are others that are currently in the city. These are the ones that are highlighted.
Okay, so how many more do we have?
We have several more that I think that are listed on our website. But these are the ones that there was actually progress being made towards some of these actions in 2022.
So if the public were to go on this website, they could see it?
Yeah. Yes, they could absolutely see the specific long-range planning projects, approved projects. And yeah, this is all listed on the planning website.
Okay, thank you. The River Park project is on tomorrow night's planning council agenda. And it says to extend entitlement. It doesn't seem to match with what's listed on this agenda under the housing element. Could you explain? There's also something else I noticed. There was a change. We have, under our city council, we have 2,708 units listed on, was it? 373.5 acres. And then on the planning, there was a difference of, let's see, I believe it said 2,284 units on 452 acres. So it seems like there's a discrepancy there.
So with regard to tomorrow night's, I believe you're referring to the planning commission agenda for tomorrow. There is an item that would propose a two-year extension to the development agreement for River Park. I don't want to get ahead of that item, obviously, because it's a planning commission. Eventually, it'll be in front of the council. We can look into that discrepancy, though, if there is a mismatch between that staff report and this one for tomorrow night's planning commission meeting. I think staff can make sure they have the correct numbers.
Yeah, because there...
I haven't seen the other parts of...
Yeah, there's a big difference. It's like you're trying to squeeze in on this, what I'm looking at. We're trying to squeeze in a lot more housing into a much smaller area than what the planning commission...
Yeah, like I said, I haven't seen the other one. So we'll make sure that the staff takes a look at that and clarifies for tomorrow night's item what the current proposed number is. But again, this is, like you said, it's an informational item based on the progress being made on some of these long-range projects. So that's what it's referencing.
So it's an informational part. So we're not actually, when we approve the consent agenda, we're not actually approving, going forward with this item, other than just a report?
You're accepting the information, correct. You're not giving any action whatsoever on any of the projects listed in the progress report. You're simply accepting the information. So and we will follow up with the, looking at the acreage and the units proposed on River Park.
Okay. Now, let's see, I also saw that 357, here we go, 357 building permits were approved for multifamily units. Where are these being planned, or where are they being placed?
Yeah, those 357 units were across two different projects. One was the Washington Commons Project in the Washington District. The other was a significant apartment project on Jefferson Boulevard called Connect at Southport. So those two projects cumulatively made up those 357 units.
Okay. And where is this on Jefferson, I'm sorry?
On Jefferson Boulevard, behind the fire station.
Okay. Right. Are these, any of these properties going to need zoning or land use changes for this area?
So this is a summary report of actually building permits that have been issued in calendar year 2022. So all properly zoned and properly permitted in accordance with development standards. So they're all compliant with existing zoning and building code.
And let's see, also, it says that there are 9,471 units are needed for the city's allocation needs. So it said within the Sacramento region. I'm just a little curious, are we considered part of the Sacramento region, or are we not Yolo?
Yes, so as far as the, I think you're referring to the RINA number, the RHNA number.
Right, uh-huh.
So the way that works is SAICOG, the Regional Council of Governments, issues a large, broader number for the entire six-county region, which is around 153,000 units for the whole planning period.
Right.
We make up about 9,400 of those units.
That's 6%, right?
And 6% of the...
That's what it says here.
Of the total share, that's correct.
Is that equitable? I mean, for our, we have 25 square miles here. Should I look at the mayor? Because she's on SAICOG. Okay.
Elijah, I think a little more, just to chime in a little bit more on the RINA number is what that actually entails. So these are not, you know, like strict standards for the city must produce this number of units by this date, or, you know, or else there's some consequence. What it is, is we have to show capacity in our city through our housing element that we have the space for our, what's determined to be our fair share of the growth in the region. And this all goes back to, like Elijah said, SAICOG has a sustainable communities plan that kind of allocates that growth on a basis of where it's best to balance housing and transportation. So West Sacramento has a big number in terms of that allocation. But because of that, we're also able to benefit from some of SAICOG's programs around infrastructure and some of the things that are helping us build out some of our transportation infrastructure. So there is a trade-off to that, but it really is a capacity number. It's not, it's not a hard, you know, you must produce that number of units. You just have to show that you have capacity to accommodate it.
Okay, I'm glad you asked. That was going to be one of the questions I had. So in terms of infrastructure, public safety, how does SAICOG, I mean, that's quite an increase. How would we handle that? You know, we have a police force that's sort of stretched already, you know, to limits and stuff. How are we going to be able to deal with that?
Yeah, so again, when we talk about 9,471 units, that's what the regional housing allocation is for our city. I would encourage you to, and I think this is where you're going, that's not like the goal, we have to build that number of units. However, as you see in the report, there are several large developments that are proposed in, say, Southport, for example. Each of those has, they're in various stages of development agreement negotiations. So when we look at issues like growth, especially in a place like Southport, all of those are, issues are factored in. And as part of that negotiation, we try to make sure that the city council's in a position, when you're asked to approve these projects, that it accounts for the growth needs around, not just public safety, but parks, transportation, you name it, all of our utility infrastructure. So those are all parts of those development agreement negotiations. So when you ultimately see them, the idea is, you know, if we've done our job and you're being asked to recommend to approve them, we've accounted for those needs with those projects.
You know, until I can get those numbers respectfully, I'm going to abstain on this vote.
I'm sorry, which numbers?
The discrepancy that we have with the numbers that we got from the city council. Do we need to take action to accept the report?
You do need to accept the report. It could be done on a two-to-one vote.
It could be?
It's not a resolution or a proclamation. Yeah, I believe we have to submit this for compliance to the state. So that's why it's important for us to stay in compliance with our housing element and general plan. It could affect grant funding and things like that, so...
You said you have enough with two?
I'm sorry?
You have enough with...
I believe it's okay if it goes two-one.
Yeah, I do, I do understand. But until I get those numbers, I'm just going to go ahead and abstain on this vote.
Okay, I would ask Daniel or Planning Division that we'll look to put those in the council newsletter for this week, just to get you the exact numbers that are being proposed for River Park.
Yeah, we can certainly follow up on that.
I have a few questions as well. We now have new commission appointments that have been made. Why, I noticed quite a few new commissioners. And I was wondering, would there be an opportunity for them to receive a presentation about this, an update for them as well?
Oh, do you mean the general plan?
Just this, like, a presentation to them as an update. So they, so they're, I think, understanding what a general plan is, understanding what a housing element is, and meeting our goals, I think, is important for commissioners to understand as this, as we continue to do this.
Oh, Mayor, we have our community allen director, Andrea Alice, as our sitting assistant city manager tonight. So I'd go ahead and ask her to take that question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Yes, I think that is a great idea. It can only help orient the new commission members as well as the public as to... as to what the purpose is of the annual progress report and all of the, all of the long-range planning documents that we report on in terms of the status in the APR. So I would ask that, that staff consider putting that on the planning commission agenda in the next couple of meetings.
Thank you. Erin, you made some mention of it could affect funding. Do you think two weeks is going to?
Yeah, I don't want to overstate that. It's just, I'm just saying that the report does have to be filed. So that's why it's a, it's sort of a, you know, to be accepted by the council so that we can file it. I think, you know, as long as, as long as we can get through tonight, I don't have a concern about that.
Okay.
Are you abstaining? Okay, I still have additional comments. The general plan update was incredibly important for the future of West Sacramento. And it does sound set in 2035. We do have a chance to revisit it, but the housing element needed to get done. West Sacramento was ahead, got it filed in a timely manner, received some feedback on establishing affordable housing, I think, elements in there. And I think we achieved success in getting it approved. Both, I think, are very constructive in the future of West Sacramento to address homelessness, in my point of view, and in my opinion. And, and this, this is very important, I think, for the state of California, tracking cities, local jurisdictions, who are trying to meet those, you know, goals in addressing affordable housing, housing overall. Without housing, you know, we will continue to see the rise of homelessness. It is a, an issue. I heard you, council member Alcala, in that you raised a question about whether we have capacity to build more housing. I see a need for us to continue to build more housing. So I differ in that if we do have the ability to build more housing, I think that's important for West Sacramento to achieve. Otherwise, we will continue to see, you know, the housing values go up, and it'll, it'll price people out from being able to purchase a home or to get affordable rent. What we're seeing now, you know, rental rates are equivalent to a mortgage rate at this time. And now with what we're experiencing with COVID, where we had the eviction moratorium, we are starting to see more evictions happen, because people are not going to be able to afford that rent. And so I'm really concerned about the increase of homelessness here in our city. This, and, and being able to draw down, getting the housing element, you know, update, is very important to continue to draw down additional state funding, partnerships with the state, and other, you know, nonprofit organizations where we were able to establish Mercy Housing, for example, or we are able to, you know, purchase any other units to be able to build more housing for those that are in need and unable to pay for the price of housing. That's why I am voting for this tonight. That's why it is important for us to continue to build housing and maintain that plan, which the housing element and the general plan that is currently drafted. And I believe we took action on the housing element when I was mayor. And I believe council member Alcala, I'm not sure if you voted for it, but I think we did have that presentation on what the housing element is. So what I do encourage, Mr. City Manager, and Andrea, I guess you would be folded in, is to maybe have a town hall with council member Alcala, so that you can help her understand, together with a constituency that is needing to understand these very technical terms, that this is what we are required by the state to be able to be in compliance to draw down additional federal and state funding in order for us to continue to build the necessary housing. Supply and demand is real, and we are short on the supply of housing, very short on the supply of affordable housing. Because when we do open up an affordable housing unit, those units get immediately closed. As we were talking about, you know, how does that process work? It, it opens up and it shuts down immediately because people are looking for affordable housing. So with that, I think that, I think we need to, you know, I think it's important for you to understand why these, why approving this tonight is, is very important for, you know, not only the city of West Sacramento, but for the region.
Mayor, and I think we all agree that housing is a really critical issue. I think when I raise these points, it's just I see, I mean, there are discrepancies in some of the information that is presented. I pointed some of that out. I think your recommendation that we have our planning commission, you know, look this over is very important. I'm glad that, you know, staff agrees on that. And I do think it's a very good idea that we have public meetings so that, you know, the entire West Sacramento, West Sacramento community, not just me or my area, but everyone, you know, is aware of what's going on in, you know, our vision for the future of the city and, you know, how we're going to address not just the housing, but also how we're going to address the infrastructure, public safety. I think that's going to be really important. My abstention is going to be because I just believe that we should have something, you know, complete and concise. So that is the reason for my abstention on this. I was hoping we could vote on this also when we had more of the council present. And you said that two weeks wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily. I'm hoping that we can maybe table this just for two weeks.
I don't recommend tabling this. I recommend moving forward if we can with the city attorney's advice that we can take action tonight.
We have our principal planner, David Tilly, here, who can probably help address the discrepancy you asked about in the River Park numbers, if that would be helpful.
If you can do that, that would, that would help.
Yes, regarding River Park, I'm familiar with that one. That's the one I did way back, back in the day. When it was first put together, it had proposed about 2,700 units in round numbers. And at the last minute, one of the underlying property owners down there pulled out of the deal, and he had about 40 acres. So the project, in the end, got approved at the 2,284 number. However, the 2,700 overall, that really represents that entire village, the southeast village, because the original River Park developer didn't control all of the land in the southeast village. And the current developer, who picked up that land after it was actually foreclosed upon by a bank, this was, again, several years ago now, did not, not, that bank did not have all of the underlying properties. So what the current developer has is actually even a little bit less land. But the biggest thing that has happened in the southeast village is the levy improvements that occurred in that particular area, especially around the bend and the river there, I think were fairly uniquely impactful on otherwise buildable land compared to other parts along the river. So, so overall, in entirety of the southeast village, which is really that area south of Davis and east of the Clarksburg Line, what we, what's known as the southwest, southeast village in the framework plan, its entire capacity is about 2,700 units. But what River Park was approved for was 2,284 on the lands that they controlled then. Some of that land is now under a levy. So they are, they are reworking their plan right now to make those adjustments to accommodate the levy footprint. But overall, the, I think the way, the best way to think about this is 2,708 is the approximate capacity for that whole area, but being River Park being most of that at about 20, almost 2,300 units.
You're saying 2,300?
Well, 2,284 was the number that was approved in their development agreement, and that is the max within River Park. But that was what was done in 2008. And, you know, some things have changed down there, you know, noting, you know, the levy, and not all of the properties that were originally comprised, the River Park project, are currently under the control of the current developer in that area. So there is some additional properties that ultimately could be developed if River Park proceeds, because River Park, they're too small to go on their own from an infrastructure standpoint.
Okay.
But if River Park goes and brings the major infrastructure down there, then those other properties could be ripe for development.
So those would be included in the, the figure of 2,708 units, is that correct?
Yeah, that really would be the whole southeast village, because there's at least 40 or 50 acres down there that are planned for development but aren't part of the current developer's holdings. But we would expect that if, if and when River Park proceeds, that someone may have interest in developing those properties, too.
All right.
What I'd recommend is that we include that clarification in whatever the report format as we submit to the state. But again, I just want to emphasize that nothing the council is considering tonight in terms of accepting this report has any bearing on future approvals or
All right.
anything else with these projects. It's a, it's a statement of information to send into the state to be in compliance with our general plan.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman, do you feel comfortable?
Yeah, I do, I do. Yeah. After it's been explained, I did have problems when I saw those discrepancies. And that's why I think they have to be brought out, because the public does ask these questions. And, you know, I am a public servant. So when they have questions, I want to make certain that there's clarity, transparency, and everything for them, as well as for me.
Of course. Yeah, we will, we can make that more, more clear going forward for this, but that really is, that really was kind of was the synopsis of the last 15 years.
Will that clarification be included in this report, or will it be included in a future?
This report.
In this report?
Right.
Okay. And I have one question. If, if River Park master plan changed hands, like whoever the developer was, they transferred it, or I know there was, it's been a long time since the last recession, you know, things turned over. How does that impact what's in this report?
Well, the current landowner was assigned the development agreement, which I think was back in, wow, 2011, or thereabouts. So they picked up all of the obligations that were in the, that were in the development agreement that the previous original developer agreed to and had approved by the city council in 2008. So they're really coming in to sort of, sort of try to pick up where the previous, you know, developer, you know, left off. They have not made much progress since, but that is what they're endeavoring to do, is to pick up where the previous developer left off. Not unusual to have somebody come in and replace somebody else. The previous developer, who got the River Park project entitled, did ultimately then, when the recession came, walked away from a lot of those properties. Most of it went back to a bank. The bank took over the rights, and then we immediately assigned those over to who is the current developer now. That was done under city manager authority at that time.
Oh, I see. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, it was under city manager, previous city manager, Toby Ross, at that time.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you for that. All right.
Can I take a step back real quick? And I just want to clarify so that everybody in the room is on the same page. Housing is a priority of the state and ours as well. And the state has, the housing and community development department has asked regions to provide a certain number of housing, and they've given us an assignment to that number as well. We develop our general plan that was approved in 2022 with feedback from the community and council approval. And then this is our annual check-in with HCD that we are moving forward. This is where we're at, at this moment in time. And in a year from now, we'll come back with updated numbers. And so we're not approving any projects. We're not green-lighting anything. It's just this is where we're at right now in a moment in time with the projects that are on the table. There could be movement with any of these projects in the next year, and then an updated plan goes to them in a year from now with new RENA allocations in order to help to meet our goals.
Yeah, we will update this, you know, annually. You know, this is something that, you know, we do. It's usually fairly perfunctory. So, but we will continue to, you know, keep it fresh, you know, as, as it's going. It's a dynamic world out there. But you're right, some of these projects may have some twists and turns, and certainly none of them are going to be coming out of the ground, you know, tomorrow or next week, or maybe not even next year. So there is time on all of these, and some of them will ultimately come back before the council.
Thank you. Other question?
All right. Thank you so much. I am now going to open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on this?
Yes, there are seven.
Seven? Great. We each have three minutes.
Danny Lanford.
Good evening. I'm sorry if I'm going to come across angry because I'm angry. I've been part of this project since the day it started. This affects my backyard. The fact that the numbers aren't correct coming to you, I have a problem with. The 2,284 was bad enough in our area that's rural for it to come on this, even, why wasn't this an information item? I'm sorry, it shouldn't have been consent. I haven't been around for a while, but I've been watching, and I'm very frustrated. I've asked for years from the city manager and Mr. Tilly, how many rooftops do we have in Southport? Because the Southport Framework Plan called for 16,109 rooftops. And our resolution that the city came up with so that it didn't go to the voters to put a moratorium on every development like Davis does, where this community has to vote on it. I am so frustrated. I feel like the woman that spoke earlier, the developers are the ones that have the ear of you guys or the staff, and it should be about this community. We need smart growth. This is ridiculous that we don't have the infrastructure that our resolution 06-63, which I have a copy for each of you, calls for. Why? I'm just so angry. I'm so sorry. But the fact that it's a new developer, it's at least 130 acres less. My husband and I went over the map that's posted on the city that is after the setback levy. I'd like to know when that map was approved, because that is not the original map. Again, I have all the documentation. I do hoard a little bit of paperwork. Yes, I do. And it's a good thing I do, because I have the information to look through. The fact that they want the same number of homes and more when the setback levy went in, that's going to put house upon house on us out in the rural area. And what's to say that when they get a fly on their doorstep that our horse, or our goats, or the neighbor's chickens aren't going to be come after because we're rural for a reason? We bought out there knowing there was going to be development, but we expected smart growth, not this stuff on top of us over and over again. And this might be for something you need to pass, but why can't it wait two weeks until a document is corrected? Because I'm afraid, once it's in that document with 2,700 homes, I don't care if it's not including the couple of acres here and there that weren't included in the project. I don't care about that. This document should not come to you when it's not correct. Why is it? Why can't we wait two weeks to have it corrected? Thank you. I'm going to hand these out to you.
Larry Lanford.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak up here. First of all, I want to start off, before I get to what I really want to say, is asking a couple of questions. The city council, the city manager, and the planning commission are all under the umbrella of the city of West Sacramento, correct? Okay, why is it that the planning commission has different information than the city manager and from the city council? In the letter for tomorrow night, it specifically states a one year with a possible additional year at the discretion of city manager, an extension on the DA. So apparently, because he's saying two years, he's already granting the extension, when the people are going to only hear about the one with the possibility of an extension. Also, that property out there has completely changed, listening to Mr. Tilly right there. It went from 452 acres and 2,284 homes. It lost acreage because of the setback levy. And now it's like 370 acres with a potential of 2,700 homes. That's 500 more homes with 120 or 130 less acreage. Also, the environmental impact review for that property out there was done in 2006. It did not take into consideration the setback levies, which were then built out there, and it needs to be done. This entire project needs to be scratched, and that developer needs to go back and get a new development agreement from the city completely, everything. The whole project is changed. It's not the same project. So now I'll get into what else I had to say. Oh, the one last thing I did notice on the planning 2021, 2029, whatever it's called, projected growth for 2040 will be 87,990. Is that additional residents, or take a total of what we currently are until then? That's just the question I had. So, going to repeat a couple of things here, but I'll be quick. I'm asking you to pull the River Park project update from tonight's consent item five. In fact, I am asking you to not give River Bank an extension on the development In fact, I am asking you to not give Riverbank an extension on the development agreement. This project was originally 452 acres and approximately 2,284 rooftops. The EIR was, this was done in 2006. Since then, the setback levies have been built and need to be taken into consideration for this project. This project needs to start all over in the process. The info update for tonight says on your agenda, 373.5 acres and up to 2,708 rooftops, completely different from what the planning commission has. Interestingly, as we said, tomorrow night, there is a public hearing scheduled for River Park. On the public hearing, as we said, it's, even on the public hearing, it says, still says 452 acres and 2,208 rooftops. So no consistency in the information there. This program, this project needs to start all over. Also, with resolution 0603 and on page 21 of the 2021-2029 housing element update, policy H-P-54 states the city will ensure that public facilities and services, water, sewer, and emergency services are available prior to occupancy. I know this has not been happening. There is a restriction on the number of rooftops in Southport. I, myself, and others have been asking for that count for years. We've never received it. Maybe Daniel can get it for us. I don't know. I'm asking again, and I would appreciate it if council would ask or direct staff to get those numbers for us. Please put the residents of West Sacramento first, not the developers. Pull River Park project from the very get-go and make them start all over from the beginning. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight.
Pat Flint.
I echo everything that was just said. Getting back to information item versus consent item, it should be listed under an information item. If you have a report going to the state of California that needs city council approval, it needs to say that on the action item. So is it illegal? Is it legal to send that to the state without actual action from the city council? And I've never seen an item listed that's information-only under a consent item. So I'll direct that to the city manager and to the city council, or city attorney, excuse me. There have been a lot of ignorance from the city and the planning department against our 06-63 resolution. You're infilling every spot you can possibly infill where green belts should, green belts should have been. You're ignoring our infrastructure, our police, our fire, and our public safety issues. Our roadways are a mess. People are being, their cars are being ruined by some of the potholes. I can't get in and out of the Rivermont area during peak hours. I'm an older driver. I take lots of precautions, and I am afraid to go in and out of my area during the times of peak hours, because people are driving way too fast, and they're not allowing people to come in. Now, that was not this part of the item. I'm sorry about that. Just how many zoning and housing element changes are going to be in this 2035 Bible that the city actually runs from the, what do you call it? The city planning, what is, what is it? No. Anyway, it's this long, big document that we're approving tonight, the 2035 Plan. When is public input going to be put into any of these changes? We used to have public information workshops where we could go and see what's being planned. I don't trust the city council. I don't trust city management, and I don't trust the planning department as far as approving anything that's going on in this town. Because you're not adhering to zoning regulations, you want to put 88,000 people in this town? You don't want us to drive anywhere. Well, honey, I can't walk 12 miles to the store and carry my stuff back. So I'm telling you, you need public input, and along with that public input into the 2035 Plan, you need an elderly complex, an ARP complex, or something to move elderly people around, to get them safely to wherever they need to go. And you need an evacuation process in the plans right now that's going to show how you're going to engraft and e graft 88,000 people from this town. Thank you.
Casey Alice Edwards.
So like I said earlier, I have lived in West Sacramento my entire life. Forty-one years I have been here. I recently, I lived in the same home pretty much my entire life growing up. It was the house that my grandfather purchased in 1967 when he moved here to be a walking boss at the Port of Sacramento. After his passing, my husband and I had purchased it off of our family, and we'd lived there for the last 15 years. Recently, we did go, oh, October, last October, we finally decided that we had fully outgrown the home that we were in, and we needed to purchase a new home. In that process, looking at what homes are available for my size family, I am a husband, wife, three children, and my father-in-law also lives with us. My husband and I both have fairly decent jobs, make a fairly decent income, and the housing that was available was out of our price range. Local West Sacians cannot afford the housing that is being brought here. There's million-dollar houses in West Sacramento. I mean, no, no actual resident of West Sacramento can afford that. My house was still in the 600,000. I barely can afford it. If I lose my job, I can't. I'm homeless. I think when you guys are doing the development, you guys should maybe take a closer look at our actual community and what our actual community can afford. We need more housing for the elderly. There's very few communities here in West Sacramento for the elderly. There's very few low-income housing that can actually be, people can get into. My little sister is a, she's a mother of six, four of which of her children all have autism. Her husband also has recently been diagnosed with dementia. And my sister can't, she can't find a place to live here in West Sacramento. She literally had to leave West Sacramento and go to Reading and live in a trailer because she couldn't find anything here. Now she's kind of staying at my house, because once again, she's, she needs to come back to West Sacramento, because this is where the programs for her autistic children are. This is where the doctor that diagnosed her husband with dementia is, and she needs to come back to West Sacramento. But unfortunately, there's nothing for her to rent or even buy. The only thing that's in her budget would be a trailer, a two-bedroom trailer. And my sister, even though she, you know, she's a full-time caregiver for her husband and her four children, she still makes a decent income, and she should be able to afford a house. She shouldn't have to live in a trailer. I think we need to be careful with the development and who we are, what developers were allowing to come into our town and develop housing, just like those million-dollar houses. I think it's ridiculous. I don't know not one person, and I know a lot of people in West Sacramento. I don't know anybody that can afford those.
Wrap it up. Three minutes are up. Thank you.
That's all I have to say. So thank you.
Maria Graha.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And so for the community that is listening, now we all know that the city is not in compliance with its housing requirements. You heard it right here. And so we're about 9,000 houses or 9,000 units short. According to these RENA numbers that we're supposed to be in compliance with, we're supposed to have low income to moderate housing available. And as you heard, we were short about 9,000 units. We are at liable, we are liable for being sued for not being in compliance. There's actually a nonprofit organization that goes around suing cities for not being in compliance. And so I'm going to get in touch with them. And then, of course, I'm also going to get in touch with the state agency that receives this report and let them know that my nonprofit is not in agreement with the way you folks are managing our housing. And so I'm lucky I have a quarter acre, and I'm going to have to put a whole bunch of tiny houses to move everybody into my lot so that everybody can have a house to live. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have a speaker for item number six.
Two items.
Yes, please, if you can, they can speak now for a public comment. That'll be fine.
Pat Flint.
Again, this is the 2035 general plan that I couldn't think of while I was speaking One thing in here that I noticed, and I've noticed that you've been doing it a lot, because I have been trying to watch the meetings live. However, your system is still not working. It's still broken, and it's two years since I started complaining about that. So if your new system doesn't work, get another system, because we have to have access to your meetings. It's public access law. In this climate action plan, the increase in scope of the work, you plan to transfer funds from the general fund to the, or maybe from the housing trust fund to the 2020 action fund, which is the climate action fund. Why do you need to do that? You've known about the climate action stuff for a long time. Where have you been putting your money? Where's it been coming from? Why do you have to borrow money or, or in this case, transfer money from the general fund? I don't understand that. Yet when it comes to road repair, you can't take it from the streetcar fund that you've been holding money into for a long time and transfer it to fix our roads? I mean, I just can't fathom what's going on in this city right now. I'm sorry. I'm having a really hard problem with that. And I try not to show my anger, because I like you guys, and I don't trust what's going on in our city, and that's a big problem for me. We're hiring this firm and have hired them to rewrite our general plan. I've not seen anything come before the public for a public hearing, a public workshop, like I stated, in the last item. We used to have, when the public, when the, even when David Tilly wrote the general plan in 2017, we had public workshops where we could go and put up on a board or put in items where we could say what's most important to us, what we feel needs to be done first, what we feel needs to be done last, and, you know, be a part of our city planning. Right now, it looks like you guys are all doing the planning for us and not representing us, and that hurts. Thank you.
Rhonda Morningstar Pope for number six.
I didn't expect to hear that much, and I'm usually the one that always has something to say. Ooh. I'm familiar with ACOM. Our tribe has worked with them. I'm going to echo some of the comments. Gosh, I'm not that short. Wait. I'm going to echo some of the comments. There should be public input. Whatever, you know, general plan, our tribe is located in Amador County. We went through an entire process, which I don't, I don't recognize them too often, but I'll recognize them on this. And gosh, just seems like the transparency is like mud. That's, you have a lot of unhappy people in the community, and all the points that have been raised are absolutely 100% right. And maybe we should make a policy where we don't accept money from developers for our campaigns, so we don't have to be loyal to them. I think that's a problem. I went and I looked at the portal, and I looked at every single city council member, and a whole bunch of you get money from developers for your campaign. And I think that's where the loyalty lies, is with the developer and not your community members of who it impacts. There's not enough public safety. There's not enough for the police. There's not enough, and there's not, there's not smart planning. You're developing, over there, all those apartments being developed over there and by the rivers. All this new development and no resources. Where's our fire department? We used to have them bright. There's a, there's a news story that talked about the need for fire, and that's why that fire station was built, but it was never replaced. It burned down, and they never replaced it. And yet there's more and more housing being developed. Now I'm going to go to the general plan. It is terrible. And one thing I'm going to point out specifically, because after the last city council meeting, the city council meeting before that, when a council member early said, well, can't you find this online? Well, I went and I looked online, and I spent a lot of time looking online for your policies. You lack policies. You rely on your general plan that says may and shall, and may and shall means nothing. It's empty. You lack appropriate policies. You lack smart planning. You lack protection of cultural resources. I am a tribal leader, and I take offense to that. In your general plan, when human remains are uncovered, you will contact a qualified personnel. Wrong, 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 wrong. You will contact the necessary tribe to consult and deal with those ancestors that were improperly dug up.
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
No more speakers.
Oh, no more. Any questions?
So I have some more questions now.
Sure. Okay, we are going to close the public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to ask legal counsel. We have this on consent when, surely this was an informational item. I thought it had been, I know, I'm looking at my colleague here. She asked if I had to clear it up, and I thought I had to clear it up until I heard members of the public raise this concern. Must this be an informational item that we vote on in order to have this accepted by the state?
No. The requirement under state law is that it be presented at a public meeting at which public testimony can be received. It does not require approval by the council. It is submitted by the planning department.
I think also, let's just kind of look at this for, when we qualify something as an informational item versus a different type of item. We place items that are purely for information on the consent agenda. We sometimes put them on the regular agenda. It just depends on, do we feel that a presentation is warranted? It could go on the regular agenda, but there is no real distinction there whether it's an informational item or not, whether it goes on consent or regular.
So I brought up the idea of smart growth. We all want housing. We hear you. At the same time, placing 500 more units in a much smaller area. Can someone address that? I mean, how is that done? 500 units is a lot.
I'm sorry, what's that in reference to?
This was in reference to the River Park. Was that the development?
Looking master from 2284 to 27.
Right. It went from 2708 units on 373.5 acres from the original 2,284 units on much more acreage. Can you explain that? What's that going to look like? I mean, you have residents out there who are very upset about this. I'd like you to address this. We're not having the public meetings. By the way, I'd never seen this before.
Yeah, that is a request by the River Park developer that is pending, and will may come to the council later, later this year. It is a request on their part. We have asked why they would do that rather than proceed with what they have, but they have elected to request those additional units. So we're doing a whole new EIR for them, and then they will see what happens ultimately when the project goes before the planning commission, then city council.
Can you define EIR for what?
Yeah, so we've done a supplemental environmental impact report to the original River Park EIR, because that was done some time ago, and circumstances have changed, you know, quite a bit in the intervening roughly 15 years since that EIR was put together and ultimately certified by the council. But they are, that landowner is requesting those additional units. They recognize that is an ask, because the development agreement caps them at 2284. That's a hard cap. And so ultimately, the council will need to decide if they will approve. if they will approve their request for additional units or not.
Okay, so that still has to come back to us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And it goes through planning commission.
Yeah, we'll go through planning commission.
It's not, if the vote was to go to approve this, we're not approving 27.
Can I just jump in again? You are not being asked to approve any projects tonight. This is a, this is a status update on our housing element and general plan. It's, it's just a statement of status on different projects.
I think through the concerns, Erin, that the public has, so I want to make certain that we're being real clear on this.
Yeah, no projects are being asked to be approved or denied with this item tonight. It's simply a, an update on progress on the general plan and housing.
Now, on this resolution, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't read it all quickly. Can you, yeah, can you, can you comment on this resolution? I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
What is that? I'm sorry.
I'm familiar with that one and can collaborate.
And what's this resolution say so that?
So, in a nutshell, with that resolution, which was done in 2006, in a nutshell, what that resolution provides is for some additional criteria by which major projects would need to be evaluated upon above and beyond, you know, the, the normal, you know, criteria in the zoning code and other parts of municipal code. So that resolution was applied when River Park and Yarborough went through, back in 2008. But truthfully, that we have not, that, that resolution really hasn't been considered or updated since because we frankly have not had a project of that magnitude, you know, actually come before the planning commission and council for a decision since River Park and Yarborough went through in 2008. So one of the things that staff levels we have been grappling with is, well, what does this resolution mean in today's world? I mean, we know what the resolution says on the piece of paper, but it was written in kind of in a bit of, bit of a different time. But it's still on the books, so we still plan to address it with the major projects once they are ready to go to the planning commission and ultimately to the city council.
And if I could just chime in a little bit too, I think just to, just to level set here, you know, you have three very large projects in Southport that are on the horizon. That's, that's commonly known. You have Yarborough, you have Liberty and River Park. A lot of the comments I think you're getting tonight are an expression of concern about growth in the city. And I would anticipate that's, that's gonna be a theme as these projects come forward. But just want to emphasize this again. There is a time and a place for that to happen. And it starts with the planning commission. Tomorrow night, there's a, a hearing on the River Park DA for the extension. And yes, it's proposed as a one year with a discretion to the city manager for an additional year. But that's just the beginning. There's, there's amendments proposed on both of those projects. And on Liberty, it's a brand new DA. So any notion that there won't be, you know, adequate opportunity for public input is, is simply false. Those are, those are coming. Tonight is just an update on, on the progress on our housing element and general plan. We, we take that very seriously. It's our responsibility to make sure that these projects are vetted publicly. And we put the council in the best decision making point to be able to judge whether or not it's a good thing for the city ultimately. So when there's a DA, you know, kind of to the spirit of this, of this resolution, which I have not, yeah, I wasn't, I was barely here at the time this was done, but I think the spirit of it speaks to the work that staff is doing with each of those developers to ensure that as those projects come forward, we're doing our part to ensure that, that all the needs of whether it's infrastructure, public safety, parks, those are all met so that as those projects are brought forward for consideration, the council can confidently say that we've addressed the growth needs. If we can't do that, then the council's in a position to not move forward with those projects.
I have, I have a real problem with the Southport project, those 500 extra units. But you're saying that we will have public, nothing set in stone. We're gonna have public meetings that people are requesting. Is that correct?
They are required legally to have public meetings. If it goes to planning commission for a development agreement amendment, it has to be a public hearing. There's a council action subsequent to that. So there'll be ample opportunity for any of those three projects as they come forward for public input.
All right.
Yes.
And I'll also mention that, you know, neighbors will receive letters in the mail as well. So there's another touch point, touch point right there.
All right. I just want to make certain that everyone gets the information. So not maybe publications in the newsletter, in the social media that we have. I, I don't want it being said that people have not had an opportunity.
Right.
Way in what's happening in their own backyards.
Yeah, and I've been here long enough, the city attorney's been here long, David certainly has been here long enough to understand what the magnitude of, of these types of issues in our city. So we don't take that lightly. Part of, part of why I'm saying what I'm saying tonight is just a reminder that, of what this item is. It's a, it's an informational item on consent to submit a report to the state on the progress on our housing element general plan.
So it's just a report?
Just a report, nothing about weighing in on the actual projects.
Okay.
Right.
I, I also want to echo the concerns that I've heard from the residents here tonight who are in close proximity to River Park and, and Yarborough, Liberty. Those are the three main projects that I see residents residing that have spoken here tonight. And just in the planning of the infrastructure, very important, seeing, you know, the management of the potholes and the response from staff is we don't have the funding for it. And the financing comes through, you know, state funding or any matching funds. We don't have it in our general fund. But I do know that sometimes when you do have more housing, that the extension from Jefferson down to Southport Parkway, from Marshall down to South, that, that road is, is a disaster. And I received a lot of complaints about that and know that, that we need to figure out a way to accelerate getting that road upgraded so that it's safe to, you know, just be able to get through, you know, bike or pedestrian management. So I, I appreciate, you know, the reminder of resolution 06-63 here in reminding council members here, I don't see any one of us who signed this or approved this, but reminding us of, of this particular resolution, helping us to be mindful of future planning, but knowing that, again, that we do need to continue to build housing. The, you know, what the city manager has said is we are not adopting anything here in approving this tonight. That does take place in the planning commission. I, I, my colleague to my left, council member Alcala, did not accept my encouragement to hold a town hall. I will hold a town hall and I will, you know, provide more transparency and public engagement. We'll invite city staff so that we can answer some of these questions. And sometimes it is, we do receive these. We did pull it off the consent agenda for discussion and public comment. So I appreciate council member Alcala pulling it and asking some questions and also feedback from the public and the reminder of the Southport framework plan and making sure that we are working together. So I will hold that town hall and invite council member Sopio Hole, who is primarily the one who's carrying most of the growth that is happening so that she can also hear back from her constituents.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was gonna say, I didn't say I didn't want to have a town hall. I just thought it was more appropriate since it's in someone else's, you know, area.
So may I, may I ask something, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
So these three projects actually all touch District Four. You know, I hear, I absolutely hear frustration and I understand. I just spent several months campaigning and knocked on doors and I hear it. We do have a process for feedback. Before we plan a standalone town hall, could we get maybe a timeline or what's already, what would be scheduled for these projects? Because there's a lot of moving parts with development agreements and whatnot. And I'd like to know what will be planned based on what's already legally required and what developers are doing before we do anything that's standalone so that we have, you know, I don't want to create an event, an outreach event that we can't get the right resources at because I know city staff is shot. So I'm just asking, maybe we could see what the plan will be and we do it time wise when these, at the right time for these developments.
I think the challenge with that is it's a process for developer agreement to be, you know, and the project to be approved based on certain factors, which I don't, you don't want to put that pressure on the staff to answer those questions because they want to delicately handle those agreements. But we do, I think, I think I would like to have a discussion with the community about these concerns and, and learn some more about what is going on. But if the city manager wanted to.
Yeah, we typically, for projects of this magnitude, and, and again, I don't want to get too far off the topic here, but for any project of a magnitude of the three that we're talking about, we typically have workshops ahead of actual official DA hearings. Those are opportunities, both the planning commission and the council for public input. Then, of course, there are required public hearings anytime you approve or amend the DA, both at the planning commission and again, the city council. So I think to council member Sopio Hole's point, there's several official opportunities that would be built into any of these projects when they come forth for consideration. Sometimes developers on their own will do some, some events like you've mentioned. I know in the past, I've seen that with some of these projects as well. So maybe that's an opportunity to have something more in the community, but that would be a discretion of developers. But just want to emphasize that there are multiple opportunities, multiple check-in points through workshops and then DA public hearings at both planning commission and council anytime one of these is considered. And, and it's, it's a development agreement. So it's a negotiated agreement between both parties. There's a lot of discretion the council has under that. So unlike, you know, say like a subdivision map, it's more, has more rigid requirements under state law. So DAs are different.
Thank you. I know this is not the time to talk about it, but I wanted to just mention this. As we talk about this new development, the issues with infrastructure, I hear it, I drive it, I understand it. Part of the solution is these projects with millions of dollars in traffic impact fees so that we mitigate the impact to our community. And so a lot of opportunity that we need to hear from residents. And I appreciate everybody coming tonight. And for all the unhappy people that are here, I know there are also a lot of very happy people. And we want those people at the meetings to, to share their feedback on where we're moving this community forward.
And I would like to ask in approving item, this item, number five.
Five.
With the, do we make the amendment in the report now?
The direction, the direction I heard, and I think what staff's commitment is, is we'll clarify in what's submitted to OPR and HCD, that's the, the two state agencies that we're required to submit the information to, we'll include the updated numbers for what's proposed in River Park and the, and the acreage item also. You're not actually approving anything. You're just, you know, accepting the information as part of this consent item.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification.
Yeah, and then we, we submit the information to the state. We're not actually even certain it, it, it has to go to council. It's just something that needs to be considered by the public. So we do it in this format to have, you know, this sort of opportunity. But the next step is to submit this information to HCD and OPR. So, and I also want to, could I touch on the, the point about the arena numbers again?
Yes, please.
Yeah, just want to be crystal clear here. These are not housing production numbers. There is no status of, the, the city is far from being out of compliance with anything on its housing element. It's actually quite the opposite. So when we talk about the need for, the regional housing needs allocation for the city is 9,471 units. It's, it's been explained before, but again, that's our share of the regional allocation across that 10-year planning period as determined by SAICOG and as a, a function of the, the entire growth that is needed across the region to accommodate the population that's expected, we're expected to see in that timeframe. The requirement is to show that you have capacity for those units, which we have done in our housing element. We have shown that we, we have enough sites to meet that, that number. The actual production of that housing, as you know, the city does not build housing. We're not, we're not, we can't make people build housing. We just have to show that we have the capacity to do it and have programs in place to, to drive affordability, which we do through our housing element. So just want to make that clear that, that there is no, that the city is not out of compliance with its housing element and has not been.
Can you help me understand under the pro-housing designation, the background for that?
Yeah, just generally speaking, so the state has a new, a newer program. It's, I don't remember the official name, but basically what they do is if a city does certain things that are the types of policies the state has mandated that they would like to see cities do to promote more housing and affordable housing, particularly infill housing, then you can receive this designation called pro-housing. And what it does is gives those cities priority points on grant applications and things of that nature. It's a brand new program, so it's kind of still evolving. I think there are, there's only a handful in the state, less than a dozen or so. Most of them are in the Sacramento region and we were, I think we were the, one of the first three that were designated in the state. So it's a reflection of all the things that we're doing, both promoting housing and infill housing and affordable housing. And, you know, we, we were proud to receive that designation, but, you know, we're, we're also delivering on what it means as well. And evidence is all over the city.
Thank you for that clarification. And with that, I will ask for what, council member Alcala, would you like to pull item five?
I did want to pull five.
For a separate?
Yeah, for a separate.
Vote, okay.
No, you know what, Mayor? Let's go ahead and bring it together. I've had my questions answered in terms of just basically it being a report, but it's not going to, it's not going to be anything other than a report.
With the clarifying changes that were noted about River Park.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'll second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council member Sopio Hole?
Aye.
Council member Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero? Aye. All right, the consent agenda is approved. And we don't have any items under public hearing, so we will move to our regular agenda, item nine, our economic development and housing workshop to consider the draft 2023 annual action plan for the community development block grant program and our community investment specialist, Mr. Isaiah Alfred. Are you going, yes, please continue with the presentation?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Guerrero and members of the council. My name is Isaiah Alfred. I am the community investment specialist in the economic development and housing department. The purpose of this presentation is to provide the council information on the proposed activities for the community development block grant funding. After my presentation, staff respectfully requests the council to provide direction on the proposed activities for the 2023 annual action plan. In a, in 2016, the city of West Sacramento became an entitlement jurisdiction which enabled the city to receive funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. A requirement of the CDBG program is to develop a consolidated plan which must occur every five years. The five-year consolidated plan must examine the needs of low-income persons and neighborhoods. CDBG funds must be used to address one of three national objectives. The city must develop an annual action plan which must occur annually for CDBG funds for activities to achieve the goals of the five-year consolidated plan. National objectives were used to establish the goals of the current consolidated plan. The first national objective benefits low to moderate income individuals and households. The second is the prevention or elimination of slums and blights. And the third national objective is an urgency which is something unexpected such as a natural disaster. It is important to note that 70% of the jurisdictions allocation must be used to benefit low to moderate income households. The CDBG program is a strict funding source, but allows entitlement jurisdictions to use the money for a wide range of activities. These activities can be acquisition and rehab of affordable housing, construction and rehab of public facilities and public infrastructure. And economic development activities are also eligible under the CDBG program. And these activities include homeless, youth, and senior programs. But it is important to note that any service activity is capped at the 15% of the total allocation of any given year. So here are the consolidated plan goals. The five-year consolidated plan was approved by city council in April 2021. There is a total of six goals. Goal number one addresses homelessness, which has been a key focus of the council strategic plan over the past five years. Goal number two addresses homelessness by creating housing opportunities. Goal number three is to provide infrastructure improvements in neighborhoods suffering from disinvestments. The fourth goal is to provide fair housing education and counseling services to low and moderate income residents and landlords. Goal number five is to support small businesses by strengthening economic opportunities for small businesses. small businesses and employment. And the last goal, was goal number six, is the preservation of affordable housing stock to provide housing rehab funding for single-family units. These goals represent the needs that were identified during the consolidated plan process. However, not all goals will be achieved nor funded with just CDBG funds. So here are some projects that CD, that were funded with CDBG funds over the couple, over the past couple of years. The PSH project, the city committed 2017 and 2018 CDBG allocations to support the development of an 85-unit permanent supportive housing project that specifically target homeless individuals with serious mental illness or those at risk of chronic homelessness. This project was completed in December 2021, and as of 20, as of December 2021, there's 100% occupancy. The North Riverwalk Trail Extension Project. In 2016, CDBG funds were used for the design improvement to a section of the Riverwalk Trail that connects to I Street Bridge. This project benefits low-income residents in Sister Track 101.01 and provides ADA accessibility to persons with mobility impairments. This project is currently underway in the construction phase and is anticipated to be completed in May 2023. With the 2020 and 2022 annual, annual allocations, the city allocated funds towards the Washington and Broderick Lighting and Safety Project. The purpose of this project was to improve, improve pedestrian safety and visibility by replacing and updating street, streetlights and traffic signals throughout the Washington and Broderick lighting, Washington and Broderick neighborhood specifically in Sister Track And in 2019, $60,000 was allocated towards the Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance Program for low-to-moderate income individuals working or owning, working, working or owning, owning or working towards developing a small business in West Sacramento. In 2022, the city partnered with the California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to operate the program. As a result, a total of 24 businesses were, business workshop were conducted in English and Spanish, and a total of 17 small businesses were assisted. Fair Housing Services have been funded $21,000 every year of the current consolidated plan, and Home Key Supportive Services at 817 West Capital Ave primarily serves the homeless population through case management. So how are activities selected? Not all eligible projects are good uses of CDBG funds due to federal regulations and requirements. Staff attempts to be strategic and use CDBG funds on projects that are ready to move forward and will not expand an undue amount to meet federal requirements. We typically use CDBG funds to leverage other private state and federal funding sources. So on February 27, 2023, HUD announced CDBG allocations for the 2023 program year. The city will receive $518,743. We plan on allocating 20% of those funds towards planning and administration and anticipate receiving an additional $80,000 with program income. So these are the activities that we are recommending the council approve for funding for the 2023 Annual Action Plan. Staff is recommending that the allocation of $400,000 fund, will be funded towards the Washington Broderick Lighting and Safety Project. As the council may recall, this, this project was funded through the 2022 allocation for the purchase of equipment, so the 2023 funding will be used for installation and the completion of the project. Additionally, $78,995 will be used to help support the Home Key Program at 817 West Capital Ave to help support case management. And lastly, $119,748 will be used for general, general administration and planning, and these funds will be used for administration costs such as program oversight, reporting to HUD and developing the annual action plan. So here's the schedule of the 2023 Annual Action Plan process. The first steps of the 2023 Annual Action Plan was to present before the EDH Commission and the Parks Commission to solicit comments. With the recommendation received from both commissions, we want to create the 2023 Annual Action Plan Draft and then make that draft available for a 30-day public comment period. It's currently in the public, public comment period, and the public comment period ends on April 17, 2023. Staff plans to return back to council, or staff plans to return to council on May 3 for the adoption of the 2023 Annual Action Plan. So this concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. I'm open for comments and questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alfred. Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you. I just have a few questions.
Thank you.
How far, where does it begin and where does it end in the Washington and Broderick Lighting and Safety Project?
So there is a map on Attachment 3 that displays the map of where the traffic signals will be placed, is primarily in the yellow highlighted portion.
So I, the public can hear it also, so what are we looking at? How many streetlights are we looking at?
I don't have the exact number, but I could definitely provide that to you.
It's okay, I just wanted, I thought maybe you might have it so the public could hear it also.
Oh, there it is. Would you like to take a look at the map? So you can reference. It's a very tiny map.
I can, I can help out here.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a great map, but it is, it is small, but the locations are clearly identified. So it generally tracks, it appears to track along Lighthouse Drive extending up from about A Street, which is sort of where the curve starts on Lighthouse Drive going north and follows along Lighthouse and then down Douglas over the Cummins. So that entire area includes streetlights, right, so far?
Yes, yes.
You want to take it from here?
So that's where the new development is, not any of the older.
It's, let me get to that. So that in the older part of the Washington District, particularly along appears to be Third Street, there are a number of light locations between E Street and G Street, so heavy concentration of new lighting there.
Okay.
Also along F Street into Waterfront Place, and really all the way, actually all the way down Third Street to Tower Bridge Gateway, and then also some lights along F Street, sort of concentrated around the intersection of F Street and Seventh Street. So it's kind of strewn around the Washington neighborhood and, and gap areas that currently don't have adequate street lighting.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see, Home Key Supportive Services, could you tell us what the 78, $995, just general, is going to be used for?
So the funding is capped for service activities are capped at 15% of the annual allocation, so that would be, that's our service activity that we're funding, we're, we only could spend up to 15% of the allocation, so it would be $78,995.
Thank you. I, I guess, just examples, just small examples so the public sort of has an idea.
Sure, yeah, I can, I can answer that. So the funding is going to be going towards the case management at the Home Key Program site at 817 West Capital Avenue. So that is services that the homeless program participants are receiving, including housing navigation, setting up appointments for medical services, getting IDs, everything related to the supportive services that they are getting. As the council may recall, we have a contract with the Yolo County Children's Alliance to provide these supportive services over the next three years, and this allocation will go towards paying that contract.
So Children's Alliance, okay.
That is correct.
And then another question. $119,000 is, that's for administration, that's not our, our city staff, that's once again, I'm sorry, Children's Alliance?
No, that is for staff administration, yes.
Okay, great.
So basically, reporting to HUD, as Isaiah mentioned previously, completing the Annual Action Plan that we have to do every year, overseeing the projects that are being funded, coordinating with our staff counterparts in the Capitol Projects Department and, and any other projects that we are funding with CDBG.
Okay.
And Councilmember Alcala, just one other note on those streetlights, there are some along Sacramento Avenue as well, between Douglas and roughly where the, the boundary to the shopping center that has Arteagus is, so Sacramento Avenue as well.
Yeah, it gets really dark there, and I know people are always crossing, you know, jaywalking sometimes along those areas, and luckily we haven't had at least, not for a while, any accidents there. Can I ask you something, Erin, really quickly, and I don't believe it's included in this, but we've talked about the sidewalk project. Can I ask you a question there, or is that a time for another report somewhere else?
Go ahead and ask, and I'll...
Just how far, how far does that extend?
So that, so I think you're referring to the, the Sidewalk Equity Project and all related to CDBG, because we anticipate that the outcome of that study could be a good candidate for future CDBG allocations if they're in these areas. So that, that study is actually citywide. It has a heavy focus on, on the northern part of town because that's where a lot of our sidewalk gaps are, and so it wouldn't be in this CDBG action plan year, but perhaps in future ones, once the study is done and those areas are identified, our staff have confidence in them to take a look at that study and kind of match it up for the areas that are eligible under CDBG, and, and perhaps it could be an item that we ask the council to consider in terms of future CDBG funding.
That's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Sopio Hall, do you have any questions?
I'll wait after public comment.
I'll wait, thank you. All right, we're opening it up to public comment?
There are no public comments.
Okay, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council.
Isaiah, thank you so much. I applaud the 2021 council on the six goals. If this came before me today, I would agree with those goals. I think that was very intentional and well thought through. Wanted to ask you a process question, and I apologize for putting you on the spot with this one. Mercy Coalition had talked about possibly being interested in funding for one of their projects, Mosaic Village, and it's not far enough in the process for this grant funding to be used for that. In the future, if we were to have this grant funding coming and there were community partners that would work with us on this and met the goals, do we have a process that would allow for them to work with us and utilize this funding?
Are you, are you referring to the Mosaic Village? I'm gonna let Raoul answer that.
Yes, Stephanie, we have actually been in contact with Don Bosley to talk about Mosaic Village and how it may fit into the CDBG and the goals that we currently have in our five-year consolidated plan. Every year, we go through the Annual Action Plan Process. As Isaiah mentioned, in January is typically when we begin the process of going to the Economic Development and Housing Commission, then we go to the Parks Commission, we have a workshop with the council, we have a 30-day public comment period. So throughout that process is when we would have the discussions with a nonprofit like the Mercy Coalition proposing a project and, and seeing if it fits within the goals of our five-year consolidated plan, and most importantly, whether it's an activity that we can, that is eligible, right, that it meets one of the national objectives that Isaiah pointed out, primarily benefiting low- and moderate-income households. That's because we have to spend 70% of our money to, to that national objective. But it's certainly an activity that could be funded. Again, we would have to assess it with any other proposal that comes to, to staff to make sure, again, that it meets our, our goals that we have identified and then that it meets the national objectives of the CDBG program.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for the presentation, Isaiah. You did a great job, and just want to say thank you so much for preparing the PowerPoint presentation. It was very informative as well, and just also want to commend the work you've done in doing the outreach. I don't know if you all have toured the roadway end yet, but it is, you know, just, you know, YCCA has done a great job together with all the partners who've been involved, the county, city, staff. It, it's a hub and a model that I've heard from the county of success, I think, envy of all, you know, other jurisdictions. And I think with the city in partnership with the county has, and the state to some degree, has been able to create a successful home key, you know, model. I don't, I know it's not easy, I know. I know it's very challenging to address a situation where people are temporarily housed and trying to seek permanent housing, especially in our situation today where affordable housing is at a minimum, you know, we just don't have it. So I, I, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of work, and so seeing that this, find, you know, this funding, that opportunity moving forward, and then we're, you know, taking a look at another model mirrored after Home Key here through another motel, and we just don't want to unhouse the people that are in Room Key and to continue to provide them with the housing moving forward. So that's, that's why I'm supportive of that, but also appreciate all the, all the work from our partners in continuing that effort through the CDBG funding, which I appreciate. Also, you know, had a chance to speak with Don about the Mosaic project and the conversations, and I will say that he reflected praise and, and just admiration and from the support that he's been receiving from you for your interest in helping him figure out how to, how to address what his vision is in expanding Recovery Cafe. So, and I shared with him opportunities at the federal level for funding, you know, with our congressional members and to see what opportunities we can achieve from that level as well, when, when we heard that there was an opportunity to ask for funding. So I'm not sure if he followed through with that, but, you know, any, any chance you hear of a grant fund request, you know, just feel free to share it with him if, if he can be a partner in that area. So just want to say thank you for the presentation. We look forward to, you know, the results of public comment feedback and making sure that the public is informed of, or able to, you know, put on our website. Charlotte Dorsey is one of the people who always explained to me, it's really hard to be able to get the message out for public comment. So just working with our community partners like her or others, you know, her Rhonda Morningstar Pope with her community center, you know, any little events you find that are out in the, organically grown through the community, just, you know, reach out, get in their email distribution list, send them what, what is happening here in West Sacramento so that we can maximize input and participation for the public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I think, do we, is it a, so it's just a workshop, we don't need to take any action at this time? All right. Next, we will go to our general administration function, part, part two, and we will go over who's our council communication assignments?
I have a quick one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, very, very quick. So the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District has opened the application period for the 2023 Clean Air Funds Program, and they have 476,725 available in clean air fund grants. The deadline to apply is April 21 of 2023 at 4:00 p.m. The Clean Air Funds Program seeks to encourage private businesses, nonprofits, organizations, and public agencies to pursue cost-effective impactful projects designed to reduce pollution emissions from mobile sources within the district through grant funding. And they have four qualifying project categories, which is the Clean Vehicle Technology, Alternative Transportation, Transportation Services, and Public Education. And previous projects included like the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, the EV charging installations, clean vehicle fleet purchases, and other alternative transportation public outreach programs. I know that our school district got some buses through this program, so if anyone out there is interested, remember again that the deadline is April 21 at 4:00 p.m., and you can just go on their site and you can Google and make the application there.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sopio Hall, do you have any, would you like me to go first while you're...
No, I was just trying to pull something up online, but I'm happy to go now. I'm thinking, Madam Mayor. On March 16, the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency met, and we were in... On March 16, West Sacramento Flood Control Agency met, and we were informed that 52 million has been appropriated for one of our West Sac projects. And I just want to applaud the team with Safe Gov for everything they're doing to get us to 200-year flood protection here in West Sacramento. There's a lot happening there, and so we, I believe they are planning to come to council sometime in the near future to provide an update of where they're at with our levy projects. So I look forward to that, not only for my edification, but for everybody else's as well. And then on March 20, the Yolo Sub Basin Groundwater Agency met, and I think the biggest thing to note is we've entered into an agreement to, with an organization to look into a fee study of what it would look like to change our fee structure. And so it's very, very early in the process, and I'll make sure that staff is pulled in and that we have conversations about what that looks like and how it impacts West Sacramento residents. And then I just wanted to mention, I wanted to thank Stonewall, Madam Mayor, residents of our community for the proclamation. I think that was last week, recognizing Transgender Awareness Week, and I appreciate everyone stepping up and staff for putting the flag up and doing that on such a short notice. So thank you for that. And then finally, I just want to mention, the live feed is not working, and so I, I hear the frustration, and I know it's frustration of staff as well. Can we figure out what we're going to do about that moving forward?
So yeah, I just, thank you for bringing that up. It actually is now located in two places because we have had problems with the on-base, which is the one, if you go to the agendas page, that's, that one is not functioning. However, you can watch the live feed. I see it working right now on the city council's main page. Before you go to the agendas, if you scroll down, there's a video right there. So if you play that one, it works. So both of them should work. We're working on a, on a permanent fix without the, not to get too technical, but the, the new agenda system is where the, the new problem is, but there is a functioning way to watch it right on the city council's page. So we hope to have that fixed permanently as soon as possible.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. I will be providing an update. I'm trying to, oh yeah, there it is. Okay, I'll be providing an update on the last SECOG meeting that we had on March 16. We approved the local transportation fund findings of apportionment for fiscal year 2023, 2024 for West Sacramento. The apportionment was 3.68 million. We approved the State Transit Assistance Fund allocation for fiscal year 2023, 2024 for Sacramento. That included 630,000, and this is from SB 1 funds approved in the Road and Repair Act in 2018 for transit infrastructure repair and service improvements. The next thing we approved, we approved two more things which are pretty significant, a resolution for the Six County 2023 Regional Active Transportation Program, also known as the ATP Funding Recommendations, and a contingency list. And authorized the director to develop an ATP transmittal documentation to submit to the California Transportation Commission under XDAF to prepare also the required Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program amendments. The ATP was created in Senate Bill 99 in 2013 to fund projects and programs that will increase biking and walking. It's a highly competitive program jointly managed by the California Department of Transportation and the California Transportation Commission. Metropolitan planning organizations like SECOG, which we, our member, distribute a portion of these funds through a competitive process. And with all the final regional recommendations subject to approval from CTC, SECOG must submit a final funding recommendation to the CTC in May to be adopted by the June CTC meeting. And there are a number of jurisdictions that were reviewed, and just want to mention that for West Sacramento, we received, for our North Fifth Street Complete Streets project, actually, that's a, that's a different project. For West Sacramento, we were recipient of funding for that. And the approved list of projects for West Sacramento, West Capitol Avenue Regional Connection Bicycle List and Pedestrian Safety Improvements for 735,000, and the West Sacramento North Fifth Street Complete Streets and Connectivity Project for 638,000. And I believe, Mr. City Manager, those will come to us for receipt at some time in the future, so we'll be able to receive more background on what this is for.
If we've received the grants already, we've applied, so we wouldn't normally have a council item per se, but there may be a CIP item that you would see, depending on the project.
Okay, sounds good. Then just for a little more background in taking a look at these projects, they, they do address certain areas for increasing bike and pedestrian safety. And, and I just think it's really, I just want to applaud the staff for all the work that they've done to be able to achieve this. In addition, we also approved the staff recommendation for project funding awards for the planning capital categories for the Green Means Go funding round. Funding awards are contingent on the California Department of Housing and Community Development's approval of the SECOG Green Means Go methodology. And just a little background on Green Means Go, it's the SECOG's newest funding program. It was approved in the state budget, and we were involved in efforts to secure the passage of this initiative, this budget proposal. This collective effort by Six County Region Support of Green Means Go has resulted in SECOG receiving approximately $34 million in one-time state funding. And the SECOG board has directed this one-time revenue to the Green Means Go funding program and adopted the program's funding guidelines. And the funding program aims to catalyze infill residential development and improve housing affordability in locally adopted green zones through investments in non-transportation infrastructure and planning activities. I encourage our council members to learn more where these green zones are located because they are, well, mainly in Councilmember Alcala's area. So to meet these objectives, the inaugural Green Means Go funding round has moved forward with three related categories, early activation, planning, and capital. And so the board approved the action in November 2022 on the first category, 3.2 million in awards in early activation, and the funding awards for 31.3 million became available through the planning and capital categories. So West Sacramento is recommended to receive, was, was recommended to receive 4.65 million for, for 650,000 for the Sacramento Avenue Corridor Infill and Infrastructure Capacity Needs and Financing Plan, and for the City of West Sacramento Planning for 650,000 for the Washington District Underground Utility Infrastructure Infill and Upgrade Project. So that was 4 million. I want to emphasize how important this is for the region, and that it has been years in the making to get to where we're at for Green Means Go, to be able to achieve what we accomplished here. Knowing that the infrastructure, we're hearing about how the city, you know, is a much older city, and there are areas that have been, you know, having housing for a long time, but not the infrastructure, and demonstrating that the city has applied for grant opportunities in an area where there's been inequity. The City of West Sacramento Sacramento Avenue Corridor Infill and Infrastructure Capacity Needs and Financing Plan, the infill will support and encourage more infill housing production and housing affordability along the Sacramento Avenue Corridor. So just, I've been hearing concerns about that among, you know, areas of our community that that's not, you know, been happening recently. And based on the funding received, the plan will evaluate sewer, water, storm drain, electrical gas, and telecommunications utilities in the green zone adjacent to and beyond Sacramento Avenue. For the $650,000 recommendation, which was requested and we received, the total amount, that particular project criteria objectives for the, was under the planning category. And the work group found that the project met both the criteria, category objectives, and performance outcomes. And so that particular project, I think, is going to continue to, you know, we'll see some good things happening around the planning and more details as we move forward. In addition, I participated in the, in the SECOG's Regional Race in Equity and Inclusion to be able to onboard new members of that. Every two years, we have new members coming in. So we did some onboarding, and it was really effective to get to learn more about one another and our plans for the REI implementation as we move forward here regionally. Next, we will have, we have usually at this time council appointments and reappointments and removals from city and non-city board and commissions. We don't have any tonight, but I do understand that we are taking a look at the Port Commission appointment at our next meeting on April 19. And when that happens, we will accept public comment under that time for consideration of those appointments. And council calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. May Andrea Ouse, the Community Development Director, sitting in for Assistant City Manager Amanda Burrell. And just a couple of items for you. Tomorrow, April 6, we have the groundbreaking of the Sycamore Trail Extension Phase 2. That will be occurring at 10:00 a.m. on Sycamore Avenue. This is a project that would occur along Evergreen Avenue just south of Joey Loops Park to West More Oaks Elementary School, just to the south of Highway 50. And that, again, is at 10 o'clock. And then on April 8 will be Earth Day and Spring Celebration, which will occur at Bright Park, starting at 10:00 a.m. and concluding at 1:00 p.m. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
City manager report?
No reports tonight, thank you.
Right. City attorney report?
No report.
Staff direction from city council members? Under staff direction from city council members, I, I would like to ask a quick question, or is it under future? No, it's under staff direction. Under staff direction, I did receive a question, you know, by the way, I did attend the board, new commission and board member orientation. It was a question that came up about what if we want to be able to have something heard? And it's not based on a commissioner's recommendation, but from council direction. Is this like the appropriate time, you know, where that recommendation, like if we would like the commission to be hearing about a specific item, is this the appropriate time to place this? I just wanted to ask for clarity.
I think it would depend on the item. Typically, the commissions review items that are on their way to city council. Most often, those items are the ones that appear on the council's strategic plan. But if there are items of particular interest, I would encourage you all to raise it with me in our one-on-ones. And if it's something that, you know, perhaps it's already on its way to the commission, so rather than kind of do it in the context of a council meeting here, I think we have those channels available to us.
Okay.
Yeah, if that makes sense, it's just, it just depends on the item.
It does. I think, I think when we hear constantly about a particular item, and yet we have this one-on-one, but we don't see, you know, and, and it could be under, you know, the strategic plan.
Right, yeah. I'm, I'm just suggesting that if there's a particular item you're, you're being asked about, we could check in first, and it, it could be the case that it's actually already on its way to a commission, so if I can get you that information first, and if it's not, we can talk about if it makes sense to run it through a particular commission at that point.
Okay. All right. And there are no future agenda item requests by council at this time, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn. I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Sophie Zehoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.